Hours around you?
Yep. All right, we're gonna get started on the joint City Council, Janesville City Council and Plan Commission meeting for Thursday, November 13th, 2025. Call this meeting to order if you stand with me for the plugs of allegiance.
In case of emergency, use the stairs and not the elevator to exit. Walk to the north side of the police. So use the stairs and.
If, apologies for that, folks. If you could flip all your microphones off, unfortunately, we'll just have to have you manually turn them on.
What do you just push this top down?
How do we work the old ones?
I think we could take a brief recess and we'll sort through those microphone issues. Sorry, everyone.
There we go. So there's a, it's still live, though. Yeah, we can unplug it.
Namaste. Okay, new plan. So we're gonna share the mic like a talking stick. So I will give this to council president, and then when it comes to the time for discussion and questions, we'll just pass it around communally. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna try this again. In case of emergency, use the stairs and not the elevator to exit. Walk to the north side of the police department and wait for further instructions. Item two on the agenda, we'll have a presentation by Nick Faust. Go ahead.
Thank you, council president. On this project, Carolyn S. Wine, I'm gonna go ahead and give a little rundown that we provided to the community members as well when they worked through this exercise in September. So the reason why we're here, of course, is that we know that there's an affordability and availability crisis when it comes to housing in our community and in our county. You folks on the council recognized this when you adopted the new strategic plan, which included a priority of housing for all. Under that guidance, city staff have moved forward to promote and encourage the development, as you can see there on the screen, and redevelopment of housing to increase accessibility and availability, importantly, across the economic spectrum. To sort of put into numbers or define further what we're seeing in the housing crisis, in the analysis of impediments study that was done by Beloit, Janesville and Rock County, we can clearly see that the number of jobs that have been added in our city has increased faster than the number of units added relative to housing. With that being said, there is evidence of a housing shortage with declining inventory in increasing prices and construction rates overall that are not keeping up with growth. Just under 40% of renters in our city are moderately to severely cost burdened, and median home values importantly have also increased more than median family income. Just a couple of helpful charts as well to put this in perspective. What this does is it illustrates the median sale price in Janesville from August of 2020. You can see that it ticked in around $177,000. But five years later, in August of this year, we now see it rising to just under $280,000. Again, that's for the median sale price. Homes sold above list, again, to give some perspective of demand, it has come down from a five-year high that was in May of 2022, but it is still 40% of all homes being sold in the city currently are going above list. Only 34% of residents surveyed feel Janesville has a good or excellent variety of housing options. These figures are from the community survey we performed earlier this year. And resident respondents also indicated that Janesville needs more of detached single-family homes, townhouses, and multifamily apartment buildings, again, with the corresponding percentages of respondents to the right. 95% of all of those who were surveyed agreed that affordable housing is needed in Janesville. That brings us to the subject of this conceptual exercise. 2400 Beloit Avenue is city-owned property. It's currently being kept under agricultural lease. However, when we look at it from a strategic perspective, we can see that it offers perhaps a potential for residential neighborhood development, one that would incorporate walkability, open space, and also importantly, would be suitable for a variety of housing types. The site offers close access to parks and other quality-of-life amenities, schools. It provides us also an opportunity, if we go back to look at that map, to create a bit of a buffer or transition between what is existing industrial uses to the south of that site and then an existing neighborhood to the north. City ownership also provides the opportunity for us to do exercises like this and work through it with you folks and the community. And as housekeeping, before we begin with the presentation from our consultant, no development proposals have been submitted. This is again a city-led concept exercise. The goal of our efforts here tonight is to help work towards creating a concept plan that would focus on the compatibility of what would be a residential neighborhood development with the surrounding existing neighborhood, the viability of various types of residential uses, so we'll get your input and feedback on that, and then also see if we could develop a plan that emphasizes connectivity, walkability, and the preservation of some open space in that area. With that, I will pass it along to Caroline S. Wine, the city's consulting partner on the project.
Is this one working? If I turn on the, okay, awesome. All right, good evening. So I'm Carolyn S. Wine, I'm with C Planning Studio. Let me see what we get to here. And I have Joe Galbreth with me, he's an architect, so he's been working with us to understand some of the aspects of construction and housing scale and different size. So obviously, you're familiar with the study area, it's 55 acres, but what we also took a look at is what's actually developable, and what's developable is about 39 acres. We have some stormwater detention on the south side, that's actually part of the buffer between this parcel and the industrial. We have that large sort of swath going through the middle that has some drainage aspects. So we kind of looked at the two pink areas, that's where we could actually put housing in this project. This one, I think, is kind of interesting because it shows you the change over time, starting in 1992, of how you had all your, you know, open space, which turned into more industrial down below, the fields convert, then there's housing that becomes more to the west, and a little bit more through here, it's 2018, 19, 20, and then 22. We have the two buildings south of the property. Does anybody want to see that again? Or can I move on? It's kind of interesting to see it.
Just back to where it is today.
Sequence, yeah. So where we are today then is looking also at the Your Land Use Plan. We also know that there was a discussion of, it was in Your Land Use Plan as conservation, which is park, but the city is looking at this as an opportunity for housing to meet some of the housing needs and the housing shortage in the community. We also looked at access, so we will be coming in off of Pierce and Polk from the north. We are looking at the cul-de-sac next to Jackson Elementary, you know, that's a cul-de-sac now, how might we access that for some housing? And then off of Beloit Avenue, we have options where there's one entrance or two entrances off of that little bit busier road. In a 10-minute walk, you can get to Kellogg Avenue, that's the only place that you can access bus. So we are looking at affordability, if somebody has maybe only one car per household or no car, could they get to the bus? It's a bit of a walk, we heard that from the residents, they felt like maybe that was a little bit far, but we just wanted to show that's where your bus system would be, your local system. So we did have the public input meetings on September 23rd, we had two meetings. I'm just gonna show you a couple of the questions and then a little bit of what we heard. So what types of housing do you think are needed in Janesville? We gave them all these different options, had a discussion, and I would say everyone except for apartments, but then they kind of came back later and said, well, we do need rental, wouldn't that be an apartment? But everything else, they said, they really thought was a need for the city as a whole. We then asked, are there groups in the community you think are especially underserved by current housing options? And first-time homebuyers came up with almost every group, as well as affordable rental and new construction. They said there's affordable rental in some of the existing duplexes or homes here, but they were specifically saying new construction. And then which types of housing are preferred for the study site? There was a large majority for single families, they live near there, but then we also heard, well, small footprints could be duplexes or smaller units. They really just wanted a variety of housing types, and then senior housing was also mentioned, that there's a need for senior housing. So in the end, there was actually support, I would say the more vocal voices were on the smaller end, the single-family duplexes, while some of the other comments we had in the small group discussion said a variety of housing types. And then the question about how can the new housing fit into the look and feel of the existing neighborhoods, which would be to the north and to the west, smaller scale, not too tall, they didn't want to have it towering, landscape buffers, and then they wanted larger-scale buildings and apartments closer to Beloit Avenue. And then we asked what concerns might they have about any new housing being built? They were just concerned about traffic, there was a lot of discussion about the Jackson Elementary, the drop-off at the pickup times, there's a lot of traffic there, and just the speed on Burbank, there was a discussion on that, the impact of view, so they're used to looking at a field right now, and so their view would change. And then if there were rental properties, they were just concerned about overall maintenance. They said, you know, they want to make sure that any properties here would be maintained, similar to what they feel people who have ownership would maintain their property. And so then what we did is, we did a little show of images, and we wanted them to give us their feedback and a ranking on, would you like to see this in your neighborhood? It was helping us gather preferences on housing type and design for today, and their preferences also. We talked a little bit about public spaces and the scale, and just giving us some direction. So the process went through, we had a lot of slides, we showed them a picture, we said, would you like to see this type of housing in your neighborhood? And they ranked it from a negative five to definitely not, to absolutely yes, five. And so I'm just gonna show you some of the top, overall out of all the rankings, these were the top-rated housing images, and the takeaway for us was that they're similar to the existing housing in the neighborhood, and they're smaller footprints. So we have single-family and duplexes here, we have what we call cottages or garden homes that are smaller, shared around a green space. The lowest rated, we thought, takeaways here, too large in height or land coverage, and they perceived them as just overall dense, and so, you know, big squared-off apartment buildings. The one in the middle is only four units, but they just felt the square, or the sort of size and scale of it was too large, and then these were some smaller footprints, but they just didn't like the overall image for those particular ones. And then some top-rated sort of medium density, they really focused on individual entrances and quality materials, so that you could accommodate some apartments this way, and the bottom, that's a three-plex, and those are the smaller cottage homes, and these are more townhome, but the top left is upper lower, could be shared hallway. And then although it was not in the positive, I would say, we just wanted to take a look at higher density, this was the top rated for higher density, and they really focused more on the materials, they liked the materials, the roof form had a little bit more of a traditional design character. So we kept all of those in mind as we moved forward. We did ask them about public space, the top-ranked images had totlots, essentially, play equipment, but in the open discussion that we had with everybody, they said, well, we already have that at Burbank, it should just probably be more maintained, we have access to the school. So they said, we really just want nice trails, we want to be able to walk through whatever development occurs. So I have two concept plans I'm gonna walk you through, and then we'll compare them at the end, so I really would love if you have any questions to jump in with me. So we're gonna focus again on the developable area. I will say, we worked with the city to understand sort of the street right-of-way, and so we are following the proposed 60-foot street right-of-way, there's about 28 feet curb-to-curb, essentially, and you're gonna see that we have sidewalks on both sides of the street, except for an area I'll explain where we don't, but you can see the scale of this is very walkable, and it accommodates your traffic. So this is option A, this is 270 units, which essentially over the 55 acres is about 4.9 units per acre. I'm gonna walk you through this. So anything in a light-colored yellow is a single-family, and we have options, we were told, sort of the average in the neighborhood adjacent is about 1,400 square-foot houses, they're ranches. And so we looked at, if we think about affordability, which is a big conversation with everyone, and everyone said, oh, we're okay going a little bit smaller scale, as long as it's good quality. So we have a variety, we have 24 units that are 1,400 square feet, which is similar to what's in the neighborhood, and then we have 18 that are 1,200, so those could be a little bit smaller in scale and hopefully be a little bit more affordable. Then we have, over here at the end of the cul-de-sac, we have our little cottage court where they would be sharing a green space, they have garages attached, but they would be buffered with green space. We have 13 duplexes, they are these little bit darker-yellow, the larger boxes, so you'll see them in this area, they're more around the perimeter, and the buffer on that side. So we looked at what is across the street from one another, so higher density would be across the street from one another. We have 21 townhomes, they are at the southern boundary here, these orange bars, so they are connected buildings or connected units together, and behind them would be some parking, and that would be the buffer to the industrial. And then we have four apartment buildings along Beloit Avenue, and there'd be 182 units combined, and they would have part underground parking, we understand that apartment buildings being built in Janesville are accommodating that with the market, and then some would be surface parking. Some other things I'd like to just point out is some additional detention. So we have stormwater detention here, and so in this area, we don't have sidewalks on both sides of the street, but we have a trail system. So there was a lot of discussion about, don't take away our trail, we want to be able to have a continuation of trail, so we kept, we kind of moved the one coming through the cul-de-sac there, and then we connected you through this area, and then we allow people to walk a loop, so there's no, actually, this is more of a trail than a sidewalk. We have some additional stormwater in this lower corridor, these are the only areas that are a little bit lower on the site, and there'd be some green space here, and then this one, we have one major entrance coming off of Beloit with that little median space, and we have connections coming down then from Pierce and Polk, and then we have single-family, the 1,400-square-foot units backing up to the existing single-family on Burbank. And so the green spaces we have are just more open, and then the trail, and there could be discussion if they're formed a little bit more, and utilizing your big sled hill is a sort of a transition. So I just wanted to talk, or let Joe Baby highlight, this is an example of those cottage courts, you're gonna see them in a different location on the next option, their firm just built these in Cedarburg, and if you want to talk a little bit about the scale, the size.
Sure. Yeah, so this is a development in a former industrial site in Cedarburg, and you can see the overall site map on the lower right-hand side, and that redevelopment contained a mix of apartments, townhomes, and these, we called it a front porch neighborhood, sometimes people call it cottage courts, but basically, the front yards, the front, every unit has a, they're more or less standalone, single-family houses, but their garages touch each other.
Green spaces sort of in the middle.
Yeah, some of the garages touch each other, some of the, some of the houses are actually completely independent, like the one on the lower left, but a little bit smaller footprints, but then their front yards, the front doors come out to a common area, and you can see, you know, little amenities are placed out there, fire pit, pavilion, it's a good place for kids to run and play, ride bikes, roller skate.
Who's buying these? Who's living there?
It was, it was a kind of a combination. When we did our photography a few weeks ago, we saw young families and we saw empty nesters. So there was a couple that was sitting near the fire pits, just kind of enjoying a glass of wine, and then there were kids kind of buzzing around on roller skates. So it was kind of a nice intergenerational community.
Do these have common walls in any way, shape, or form? I mean, so these are independently owned, but do they have a common wall?
They're actually rentals.
That's what I was getting, so.
These are rentals, and they only share, some of the units, the blue ones that you see on the upper right, there's a garage wall that touches, but the actual, but the units themselves are sort of, they're exposed on at least three sides there, and then some of them are all four sides independent.
Everything in that whole development is a rental? There are no?
Yeah, that's how that developer set it up. We're not saying that that's how this is.
You can go either way.
Correct.
I think it's just good information, that development is all non-owner occupied.
That's correct. That's correct.
I just wanted to show the pictures because not everybody understands the, you know, the scale, and our footprint on our plan is 1,000 square feet, so they're a little bit smaller, so.
So now if he turns it on. So what was the monthly rental rate?
I believe it was around $3,600 a month, but that's, I mean, it's Cedarburg, so.
I get it, but.
Yeah.
Reference point, okay.
Right, reference point. Yeah, the townhomes were, I think, in the upper 2000s, but I'm not sure what the apartments are, but they leased up in four months, so.
So I wanted to show you just a bird's-eye view, because there's a lot of discussion of how does this connect to the surrounding neighborhoods, so we are off of, ooh, I'm just gonna move this because I keep bumping it, it might be easier than, okay. So this is Beloit, and so these were the four apartment buildings, the entrance off of Beloit, you'd enter off of Pierce and then Polk, and then this is that little cottage court that we have, and we did ours individual, they're all individual with side yards, again, it's quite flexible, and then this trail system can move you through, and then you can see the stormwater here, and so the transition of these units, these buildings are essentially the same size as what's on Burbank, the smaller ones are tucked in the middle, which we are hoping are more affordable, and then the duplexes are across from the larger footprint of the apartment buildings, and then we have, again, higher density here with the townhomes and duplexes over there, and another view looking from the cottage court over, so obviously, we've added some trees as buffers, but you have quite a bit that's already existing in some of the other buffers, so different view. And then this is Polk coming through in that little wraparound area, so there's quite a distance, I think the scale of it, understanding how far away some of this is, all the way over to Beloit Avenue. And then that's just looking at the trail, the trail's coming in, the school would be behind me, a couple duplexes, and then some 1,400, you could go larger square footage here, one comment was that they just didn't, residents didn't want, you know, large-scale luxury housing here, they wanted it to be much more affordable. So this is option B, we have fewer units on this one, this is 234 units, it's roughly 4.25 per acre, four and a quarter, so we have 50 single-family here, we have 31 1,400 square foot. So again, the yellow in here is all the single families, you can see the larger footprints here are the 1,400, and then we had 1,900, 1,200, which are scattered in this area, and we sort of trickled them in that area around the water. We have the cottages down here this time, where I had the townhomes last time, and so they have their own little green courtyards, so as Joe was showing, that shared area would be here, it would be here, and then it would be in this section, so as you come down, Polk, you would see that green space, and then this one connects with, hope Pierce comes through and connects. We have the townhomes here, we have 20 townhomes, we have only three duplexes on this one, we have those in that location, but there are parcels where they could fit, and then 140 apartment units scattered through three buildings on this site, but again, holding our edge. We have a little bit of a greener buffer here, we have two entrances on this one off of Beloit, so dispersing the traffic, how it comes off of Beloit and on, and that would require some changes in your curb cuts. And on both plans, we know the plan, the city is looking at a multipurpose trail right along Beloit, which we thought was fantastic, so this would be a trail that connects north into the city and can go south, and so residents could take their bikes or go for a walk, or take their dog for a walk, or go for a run on that trail system. Again, multifamily, in this case, the apartments have. Again, multifamily, in this case, the apartments have both underground and surface parking lots. So what's different over here is the cul-de-sac. We just extended it, and we have 10 units over there. And then we brought the trails. The trail continues. So there'd be, potentially, there would be sidewalks on both sides of that street. You could decide as a city, oh, you know, maybe we don't need it. We'll just have a trail. We'll walk down the, because it's not as busy. You could walk down the street and connect to the trail. And then the trail, this is single loaded. You can see around here. So that's where the trail system is. And we expanded the stormwater in that area. So that pond is much larger to accommodate your stormwater. We have a smaller one in the middle there. So this is the bird's eye view here, again, from Beloit, looking that direction. So you can see how we tried to blend all the residential, the single family, giving this sort of a unique blend between the townhomes and the apartments. And then this is looking, obviously, towards the east. And you can see how we have the trail system and the expanded stormwater management from where you currently have it, and then the cul-de-sac area. And this is looking at that little curved area where you'd have a view of the landscape and the pond. And then this is Polk coming down and going into one of the courtyards. This would be all green. The driveways are behind. So they have shared drives, but the front would be all green. So that's where we're at. And we'd love to hear your feedback because our next step is revising the plans and having a public open house on December 11th. Anything
Two questions. Are these, is this based on the proposed zoning code changes that we're working through?
My understanding is yes. I actually sent all the drawings to Gray for them to sort of look at this. I would sort of defer to Brian, but our understanding is that they would be a little bit smaller lots. He would permit that, and a mix of housing types. So I would say our lots are averaging, the range, I'll give you the range, is just under a quarter acre, all the way up to more than a third. And then those on the cul-de-sac are over a half acre. Right? So keeping that in mind.
Thank you. And that answered my second question.
Okay. The lot sizes?
Okay, I have a couple of comments and a couple, a few questions. So, and mind you, these all didn't, I didn't think these questions up. I've had somebody asking me about this. So one of the comments is, is that there is, especially on option B, there's a lot of roadway. And the question was going to be, compared to home density, would there be any substantial dollars put in from the city on that? I guess option A would be better for roadway, except the, it's not the cottage area on option B. It's houses. But, you know, it's kind of the same situation with the, there's a lot of roadway in there. So that's going to be a big thing for a developer always is, is that infrastructure. Another comment was that option A was preferable, but would there be any, they had said that option A, the duplexes on the southern portion of this seemed to be kind of underutilized, that the duplexes, yeah, that more duplexes could fit in there. So that was a comment on there that that area to the south, that could put more duplexes in there and maybe takedowns, and maybe have less apartment, maybe more duplexes and less multifamily apartments. A question is, are these going to be platted lots? Is this going to be a subdivision?
I will defer to Nick on most questions. I would just say with the duplex, we have two layouts, just for orientation. This one has those two garage doors all facing the street. Well, we have another layout here where the garages would face each other. So as you came down the street, and so you could take that, takes up more space than that does. So in that layout, maybe we could get another one in there if you wanted smaller side yards. Right?
Just some comments about looking at both of these. So platted lots, are these, is this going to be a platted lot subdivision? The detention, well, the water features, I should say.
Stormwater management, right?
Yeah. So the water features, one of the comments was, or the comment was, are they going to be allowed under the current stormwater guidelines? I know Ryan's busy writing this, writing away over there. Okay. Just, these are just comments on this, right? And it said that the water features are likely to be semi-wet depressions areas and not really a feature, which could be. Just a little.
Typically, what happens in these, you have a lot of native plants that are around the edges. It's not something that's a formal water feature. It ebbs and flows.
Okay. And then would the site be allowed to drain into a regional stormwater facility? Or will it have to be detained on-site? And the comment was, if it's on-site, it's underestimating the detention requirement. These are probably all engineering questions that I don't know. But I'm bringing them up because it, it's a concern from somebody looking at this and thinking, these are things that they're, I guess, thinking about on this. Is that all my questions then? Let me see. I think that's it. I'll be back if it isn't.
Except for storm, we looked at about 10% for stormwater, how we expanded it. So if we need to go more, we, we can make those revisions. And I think all the other questions, I think, are for the city, probably.
Okay. First off, it's, it's my understanding, way before your time, 15 or so years ago when we platted the industrial to the south of this, that there seemed to be an understanding that this area was reserved for conservation and green space in order to get the neighbors to buy in. I know it's technically not a park, but what is the first question, how is that going to be communicated and accomplished?
Yeah. So I weave, that's a comment the administration has heard. I would just say that, I mean, we couldn't speak to what was said under previous city managers many years ago. But it's something that we're mindful of, and we understand that that's a concern some folks had. I would, again, reference back to the fact that housing is a critical priority for the community. This land is city-owned land that we're exploring because it makes sense for a potential residential development. And so I certainly hear folks who have concerns about what was said in the past. But we want to work through this exercise because we are, like all of you folks, looking for solutions when it comes to our housing issues.
I do think you need to be aware and very sensitive to that issue. It's not one that you can just, the city cannot just come out and say, this is what we're doing. That will not sell. I do believe this is going to be a really good test for the new upcoming zoning ordinance that hasn't been enacted yet. But this meets, I would say, 90% of their bullet points. Don't you agree? So I think your two plans are looking good on that. How is this going to be marketed? Are you, is the city going to develop this and hold it out to developers? Or are you going to just say, here's two suggested concepts, and let the developer create their own or something else?
Caroline, if you're comfortable starting with that, I'd like to maybe explain your experience.
Sure. I do a lot of work for different municipalities. I'm often brought in to show what's possible. And then there's a discussion. All I can tell you is it won't be exactly like either one of these. But it's usually my job to start showing how the land can be developed, and then it gets revised several times. So I would say what we would hope is the end product is a mix of housing types. But is it exactly like either one of these? No, it never is exactly. But we do a pretty good job of showing road connections. We're really careful to make sure we're responding to your current road section designs. And understanding the market is important. So that's why we have a variety of the housing. And we're shrinking a little bit smaller than your current average home size right now.
Well, with that understanding, I'm not going to nitpick every little criticism I have. But I will say, concept or option B, the pros of that is there's two ways in and off of Beloit Avenue. I think that's a big plus. Although they could be made, one of them could be still made into a boulevard double entrance, as you show in number A. I also very much in favor of the curvier street layout rather than the grid, although there's a grid in that neighborhood. I think the curvier lends itself to what you're trying to do. I also like on B that you created a larger buffer to the neighbors to the north that are the most directly affected by it. And that might be a little, a little bit of a relief for them, knowing that they were probably the most affected by this. I didn't like on B, the cottages where they're at. They look like barracks. We have a place in Janesville called the Barracks. And it's a lot larger scale than this. But here, you're looking into each other directly. I think you could replace that area with a mix of townhomes or duplexes, I think would be a better use of that space. The second area on B, the 12-acre parcel, I really wonder if it's going to be cost-effective to put that much roadway in for 10 or 12 homes. Either move them closer.
Are you talking in this, the extended cul-de-sac?
Right there. That's a long road. That's an expensive road.
We, I will tell you, we had 12, and I thought it looked too tight. So we went to 10. But you can easily fit 12 in here if you're looking at the cost per linear foot of road.
If you look at the cost per lot for those, for that road, it's very high. So actually, your cottage idea is new to the community. But having it as its own little enclave might actually be a very big attraction to people that might be interested in that form of housing. The other one for that 12-acre parcel would be if you were going to investigate senior housing, you could put a nice campus on that 12 acres. So that's my two cents for right now. The biggest one is how to deal with the promises made in the past, or the understandings made in the past, and how you're going to market this.
Can I ask you a question? When you refer to senior housing, are you referring to things like, like a townhome scale or larger footprint? Because I know the townhomes fit in here as well.
Yeah. Whatever the market would bear, but something directed toward seniors.
Okay. Because sometimes seniors are just individual houses that are ranch as well.
They would have to be one-story.
One-story, yeah.
So your cottage is one of those.
And then I will make this comment for myself. Having watched development happen over my past 40 years, and I know that I've been on a committee with the city discussing the infrastructure for developers because it's a huge thing to take on. And in the past, City of Janesville helped with that, and then that stopped. And sometimes, that's a huge thing to stop a developer, just when they have to put in all that infrastructure ahead of time. So maybe we could go back and revisit that discussion or committee that we had, that could talk about somehow how to help a developer with all of that infrastructure that's put in. I know that Doug would probably agree with me on that one. So it has worked in the past, and we need to try to figure out a way to do it again to help them, but not hurt us. Because we've also, the City of Janesville's been hurt by it as well. But I do think that there's a way to do it if we put all of our collective heads together.
I will say, in the other places where I've worked, and probably Joe's experienced this, typically, the city will put out separate RFPs. So there'll be a developer who does single family. There'll be a different developer who does maybe the apartments, and another one who does townhomes, so that it's not one themed, it's not one project with one developer. That's very rare, unless you find somebody who can do all of those different housing types. So there's, depending on the direction the city would want to go, there's some flexibility there.
I like the option A because of the amount of housing you're offering. My biggest concern with option B is also having those two entrances onto a major thoroughfare through an industrial park. You want to have kids crossing the road there? Absolutely not. I don't understand why the, the trail would be along that edge. I'm trying to figure out, why would anybody want to walk or ride a bike in an industrial area?
My understanding, and so I advocated for this trail being on the west side so that nobody is crossing Beloit to get to the trail. And my understanding is the city was already in discussions of connecting to downtown and connecting to other parts of the city. So this is a much broader trail system. They just happen to be able to connect into it if you live here.
So where is it going to go heading south?
I don't know the overall plans for this. I'm not sure.
Does it loop down 11? Does it, does it follow around by, on the backside?
You have to go all the way and navigate the railroad tracks and up Reed Road.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. That makes sense. If I could ask this, on option A, this pear-shaped little, how do those roads go? I mean, do they just stop?
You're talking in here?
Yes.
Yeah, there's just a driveway. It's only access to the back where their garages would be.
Okay.
And these are shown as one-story, single-story. They're small footprints. So they, they could be walk-up, you know, no steps. We aren't envisioning this road goes all the way around. It's just for you if you live there. I think the issue would be if you have visitors, we have to take a look at, would we have to add some additional little parking right here? So we have a couple perpendicular spots for people to park, your visitors, your families coming over.
Okay.
Right?
So when, when I look at that, I think that would be great for senior housing, but not so much because you don't have access to the buses. You don't have clear access to public transit. You just don't have the same location in that little neighborhood setup is much easier to get around for anybody in senior housing than to be stuck on a one-way road or in a driveway.
Well, if, if it was specifically for senior housing, in this case, it could be, you know, 55 and older, you're independent, you're driving. But if it would be for seniors, we'd have to look at drop-off, pick-off with a shuttle bus taking you to your appointments, as well as a little bit of a parking lot for visitors and family.
And it's also pretty close proximity to the school. So you will always have foot traffic and noise.
Or something to watch, I guess, from the senior perspective, right?
I, kind of with Doug, I like B. I have, I have more likes on B than I do on A. And it starts with that buffer along Burbank and all that. That, that's much nicer on the north end up there.
Through to this.
Yeah, that, that just works, looks better. You know, again, I don't like the straight streets as you're going in there. What I like about either one of them, and putting housing in there, even though there's been some, you know, discussion about should this stay or not, you're that close to a grade school. And to have that many new units where families can walk to, to a school and utilize the space of that school for play yard, whatever. To me, it's just a logical way to utilize that ground in that close of a proximity to a school. You know, it's just great for some young families to just say, hey, I want to be out there. And I know, you know, for the next 10 years, if I have two kids, I'm going to be walking, walk one of them at least to school. So that's why I like this concept in that area. Like I say, I think there's more positives on B with the spacing. And I'm not, again, we got a fire guy here. Is that acceptable to have on the left-hand side, those two dead ends there? And how do you get a fire truck turned around? Are you good?
Why?
You know, yeah. All right, deal. All right. It just looks, I like the cul-de-sac a lot, you know, the, the one on the right. But I just think option B has, you know, more redeeming positives to it, to me. Even though it is a little bit smaller density, I think it fits with what the intent was for the area with some past conversations and giving buffer zones and, and a little bit more movement around. and giving buffer zones and, and a little bit more movement around.
Thanks for the info. I'm just going to come right out. I'm not a wordy gal. Option B. For the reasons that Doug pointed out, also, I like the, the water distribution. I, I would like to, I definitely do not like the barrack scenario on option B. That, that's got to go. However, I don't know. I, I'm wondering if there's a way to build out the cottage homes with more variety in there? I, I don't know. I'm sensing that people think that seniors all want to be by themselves all the time, which is a little bit concerning to me. So I, I think that if there would be a way to kind of, you know, maybe move option A, yeah, into option B, but have a little bit more variety. I think the other thing that I didn't, with option A and option B, even though there's a small differentiation in the amount of units, that, that's a substantial differentiation of traffic. And when I was attending one of those meetings, that was a very critical component as it relates to, to the, the neighborhood. I will tell you, when you have these types of formats, any type of speeding or traffic are all your neighbors. People generally do not go into subdivisions or areas to speed. It's taking the ownership with your neighbors and telling them to slow down. The other thing I was curious about is if we could potentially add a few more duplexes and less apartments.
What do you think would be the appropriate building type that would be buffering on Beloit?
Well, I, I think that, well, that's the other thing I was looking at when, when you were commenting about, you know, the access off the road. You're going to have the majority of, of, I'll just say tenants in that space. So they're going to be in the, the place where they live, most likely. So I, I think that that is okay. I think what I was looking at, when I looked at option A, is there's only four duplexes in option A in that space.
You're talking in the southern space?
Yeah.
In here?
Yeah.
So there's some here, and then they're all the way up here. These are all duplexes. So the duplex, 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 kind of wrapping the duplex.
I would like to see potentially more duplexes somehow in option B, is what I guess what I'm saying.
Yeah, we're down to three here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm hearing this is an option. I, I just, a little clarity, if you could provide. When you're saying integrate some of that, sort of the cottage development into B, are you saying?
Not, not in that space, in the, in the designated 12-acre space.
In this area? Oh, but just shift it out a little bit more?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So take, take that and drop it in here. Yeah, that's what's, works really well. It's very interchangeable. You know, we can't just change the whole grid, but those things are, yeah.
I, I do believe the water feature would be well-received in comparison to having detention areas in, in your neighborhood. Not that you can't make a pretty detention neighborhood.
What?
Just a quick comment. I, I prefer option B as well, but following Kathy's, which I think is her suggestion, you kind of flip the, the property that, to the left here, and, and then make more duplexes there. The other question I have, and maybe to Ryan, would be, what's the next step in this? I mean, because as you described, you know, this is a proposal, essentially, it's going to be from the city. And I assume that the city will kind of act as the developer of this property and solicit builders and so forth for doing this. I mean, and I take it, it's probably going to be a, hopefully, a property that's going to be developed all at once. I mean, it's not going to be developed piecemeal. It's going to be an active development site, hopefully. And I assume it's going to be to try to do more, not rentals, but to, some rentals, but a housing mix of ownership as well. So the question I have is more going to, how is this going to be funded? Do you think, is it possible? And I understand that it may even be possible to use some TIF funds to be able to do maybe the, the infrastructure. I, I don't know how much water and sewer is going to have to be brought to this property, but certainly, I think the streets might be able to be done. But I'm, I'm just kind of curious if there's been a, a plan, that what is the next step? And as you said, that these properties, as they get, as you get more into it, they're always going to change. I mean, that's just, you build a house, you're going to change it, right, Doug, about 20 times before it's done. And this is kind of the same thing, even more complicated. So that would be my, my questions.
Yeah, there's slight adjustments we'll make even before it goes back out to the, for the open house, and moving things around, and then that happens again and again, right?
I think that shifting around, if you take the west, you know, cul-de-sac or whatever, I look at those homes on that side, and Doug, you know, they could be sold for a plus price because of, you know, having green space, backyards, a little quieter area. So, you know, those might be some places where a developer might want to maximize your space back there of those houses, just because of how quiet it's going to be on that area. So I think that's a developer preference that we're going to have to just kind of work with as we go through this.
And if you want to answer some of the other questions, other communities we work in, they, they will sit down with a variety of developers, invite developers to have a conversation about projects like this, yeah?
In regards to the financing, I think that's, we're not at that step yet. And so, you know, we'll, we'll see what developers, what they need, what they come for, and what they're asking for. At this time, we don't have any answers to those questions.
Could I ask a question, since you've done this before? To your point about it's all done at one time, has that been the case, like in Cedarburg? It was, it was built out all?
All at once. It was one developer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. When I've done this, where there's one developer, then there's a negotiation of who's paying how much for the roads, and sometimes the developer's paying for it, and other times the city's paying for it, you know, are they, and that, in some cases, they're private roads, and then the developer's just taking care of and maintaining them. And others, which was a larger-scale neighborhood like this, it's usually their city streets. So you follow the city requirements for the street, and then there's, there's a negotiation of who's paying what portion for the streets. And typically, the streets will go in first, so then developers can see, you know, where the individual lots, and the lots might shift in size or scale, and you might, instead of having one, two, three, four, five here, are you going to get six or four? You know, that's where it shifts a little bit. But they work really hard to make sure whatever the street layout works for the different parcel sizes before they put those all in, right?
So I, I attended both the, those sessions and listened to the, the residents there. So I'm going to ask some questions that I think are things you're going to see again when you re-present this to the neighborhood. And I might have missed this one. What's the, what's the height that we're talking about on the, the apartment buildings that you're?
Three stories.
Three stories?
I don't think I actually said that, but yes, they're three, they're based, and the calculation.
Because I know height was one of their concerns on any of those.
Residents were clear, nothing taller than three stories. And I think three stories is appropriate scale for this neighborhood. And also, the higher you go, the more parking you have to accommodate, so it kind of goes back and forth.
I don't know if the city itself has done any measurements of the decibel issues with the factories to the, to the south, but that was, that noise concern was obviously a big deal. And those were for houses that were actually on Burbank, as opposed to houses that are really going to be now that close to the back of those properties. So describe again, what do we, we have a little bit of green space, obviously, there, and some potential trees planting. Is there any other engineering things built into either one of these plans that, to help block noise? Which is the same issue, we're going to have the GM Jetco as well, obviously. So is there anything besides trees and green space?
Right now, it's trees and green space. I mean, depending on the noise level, then it comes down to construction, like, you know, your windows and insulation, things like that. We, we weren't doing anything like big berms. I mean, that's the other thing. It'll change your view, but you'll still hear some of the noise. Yeah, noise we heard, and sometimes smell we heard.
Another one, and was probably the biggest concern, I think I heard, was that traffic concern around Jackson Elementary. I guess I don't see much that we've done, other than potentially adding a couple of drainages off of Burbank to really account for that. In fact, you're adding that cul-de-sac there at that corner that's basically draining right into the problem area of where Jackson Elementary is. So can you just speak to how we believe, how we believe this is going to affect that? Because you're also adding, obviously, foot traffic with a brand-new neighborhood. That's now also going to be adding to whatever traffic issues that are currently there with, for Jackson Elementary, so.
Yeah, we had heard the drop-off pickup are significant. Rest of the day, it's fine. Did you just talk about water draining to the school?
No, specifically, specifically drainage in terms of people coming out of the, that cul-de-sac and literally driving.
Oh, people coming out, not water.
Like during that time period of, of dropping off, dropping off kids, which is the time period people tend to lose their, or leave their homes anyway. And we have this issue in, where some other elementary schools are in the south side, same concerns, where we've sort of built up development around elementary schools that were sort of already in existence. And as a result, we have some traffic flow issues around each one of those elementary schools, and some potential risks to students and parents at that time as a result.
Yeah, we didn't see any other location to bring that street, because I don't think it's feasible to bring it through here without a lot of grade-changing, like moving a lot of dirt for that. You know, that would be an option to think about. And we didn't, there's no, there's no location to come out over here right now.
No, certainly not to the south, but I, I guess I, I would suggest that, that perhaps, perhaps considering that road all the way around Jackson, or maybe we should.
You're saying come through here?
Maybe we should be involving the school district sooner rather than later for other options, in order to see what we can do to maybe alter access from that east side as well as we do from the west side.
Just an add, that's why I also like B, is you dropping it out onto Beloit, and there's less traffic going up to Burbank from others, so I forgot to add that. But I think, you know, from your school traffic, I think you're better off taking them out to Beloit. I know it's a busier street and everything, but there's less going up to Burbank, to your point about school time by bringing them out there.
Right.
I agree with that.
I guess another question.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're all good. Hey, you agreed with me. I, I usually go. Another thing, as we're like, just talking about, having done those meetings, did you do any number crunching at all in terms of how people's perceptions were between the two sessions, as opposed to just, or did you just lump them together?
We have it all, we have it written up as two separate meetings in our notes that we've summarized.
Okay. I'd be curious to see that, because there was a very clear demographic difference between the two sessions.
I would say.
With one being probably people who are more likely representing, who's probably going to be purchasing these types of homes in the future, versus residents who've lived there for a long time period and probably wouldn't be, so.
Right. We had a smaller amount of people at the second session that were from the neighborhood, and more, yes, I would love to have some options, I would love to purchase. And then we did have, I think, a table of developers. They were very quiet, except for in their internal discussion, but I think they were clearly listening, like, what are the opportunities?
Yeah, and I guess from my perspective, I, I don't have a, a preference between the two options, to be honest. Option B is probably a little bit prettier, but it doesn't matter to me. But I do think, like, some of the commentary that I'm hearing about, like, some of the design elements of the barracks, the, that cul-de-sac, especially in option A, honestly, I, I think those are much more modern. I think those are much preferable to future generations that are purchasing right at the moment. Hopefully, you guys are discovering that as you're doing your zoning changes, that maybe what we thought of in the past isn't the same as what is going forward in the future. That looks very much like the community that I am, immediately my fire station sits next to, which are very popular and very growing rapidly area, area of the west side of Madison. I think that's what some buyers are definitely looking for, as opposed to that concept from the past. So if it can look like something that fits in the neighborhood, but is what their people are actually going to want, I think that would be preferable, so.
So back on to the cul-de-sac idea, that is going to be a bottleneck disaster at 3 o'clock. And at 7:45 every single day, you're not going to get in or out because traffic lines up nose-to-end all through that area. And I don't know anybody, to be honest, who's going to be excited about living on a cul-de-sac when you are literally trapped twice a day, every day.
So two questions. Is there any discussion with the school about changing the, like, is there any option for a different drop-off location, or?
Where, where is the drop?
The drop-off, in my understanding, is right in here, right?
So they do it front and side. It's, no, you're.
So it's already consumed?
You're stuck.
That whole corner, or like you do, all sides of Burbank, and all sides, you're complete the church, they pull the church parking lot across the street. They're flooded.
If you come out of that cul-de-sac, can you make a left rather than have to go all the way out to Burbank and then work your way around?
No. Because parents will park. They don't care. And there's never a cut there to stop it. Parents will park all the way to that corner, and then.
I understand, but it's not a road right now. And so, once it becomes a road, will they at least give a gap for 12 cars at one time?
Franklin.
Okay, all right, never mind.
And you've got the fire station there.
Never mind.
Yeah?
Never mind.
But there's a change, I'm just, in certain projects we've worked on, you have, there's a change of behavior that will need to, will need to happen, other than I'm hearing, are, are you asking us to explore a road connection through here, which would remove part of that hill? It's expensive, probably, is what it is, yeah. No, okay. I mean, you do have a cul-de-sac now, which means that there was some intent that there would be something around it, but I, I think you can only get maybe five houses if you just leave it exactly where it is now. But there would be another study. I mean, these, the, the best thing about having options of these drawings, you'll have these two, you'll have probably another, you know, one or two. You can use all of those in discussions in the future, in talking with different property owners, and developers, and the school district to have those conversations. But I think you're right, it affects the value of that land right there, right? Other feedback? So what I'm hearing is a little combination. You like things on both. There's quite a few of you that like, because this is more curvy, and there's different views. We, we think a lot about the views when you move down streets, so, you know, here, what do you see? The same thing here, though, you know, when you come in here, you know, you see more the, the endpoint being green. The same thing here, when you come in through the boulevard, you see the endpoint, green and the trail, right? So even though some of those are grids, we're thinking about what the views are when you're looking down those streets. So a little combination of both. Maybe we'll do the cottage courts here, I'm hearing. Put that on this one. Changing this, yeah. It is interesting in site plan how things look, then, when they're built, they don't quite look like barracks, but, you know, sometimes it's the plan diagram, right?
Yeah, I mean.
I should show you, yeah. Do they look a little different here? Do they still look like barracks, with the green space? Yeah, they still do, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'll comment here. I, I do like option B better. I, I like the, I guess, the design, the curvature of the roads and, and things like that, the amount of green space, buffer zones that we, that we have. You know, mark me on your list, Erdman, I, I agree with you with the, the barrack style. I do like that. I mean, I like how they have that kind of communal space, and I think that would be desirable for, I guess, people that we would be looking at purchasing some of these properties. I think the one big thing that needs to get figured out is the, the traffic flow, the pattern of the school. Councilmember Miller is absolutely right with B and the traffic. I just don't see how that could mix. So we'd have to get with the school district. I believe the city's been in contact with the school district reference Franklin, or I'm sorry, yeah, Franklin Middle School, with kind of changing their drop-off area. I don't know. I could be speaking on a turn, I don't know that, but, okay. The other thing, too, is I don't see any walking path from the, on neighborhood on the east side towards the school. I would imagine that the neighborhood's going to have several school kids, so if they wanted to, you know, to alleviate some of that vehicle traffic, how do we get a pedestrian kind of walkway there that's safe for kids and families to?
We would, we try to stay off the school property, so I will just say that. But if there's some discussion with the school about how they'd want to come in, but otherwise, we could. we could have it just south of the tree line and bring you out to south where the cul-de-sac is.
Yeah.
Or work with the school to say, where would you be okay with this trail? Because what happens is the general public is using that in their loop and their, you know, outwalking.
Right.
The school's done at least one other, or the school's done at least one other property that they've come in from the other side, so they may be available to exactly that, a much more direct now.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would, one, it makes sense, right? Two, I think ultimately it would be safer if you could eliminate some of the kids walking on those main roads with all the traffic at those heavy times. And also, you could reduce congestion by some of the families being in this neighborhood and not driving all the way, you know, not, instead of driving.
You would not have to drive to drop off, right?
Right.
And even in winter, this would be a pleasant enough walk. Okay, we will take a look at, we'll just show an option, and then that would be part of the discussion of where we go. Quick question with what we're calling the barracks. If we took out the middle unit, so we have quite a few here, if we took out the middle one in every section, we'd still have 14, we have 12 over there, or is it just they're too rigid? Is that the feeling? But if we took the middle one out, and so we gave a little more space, we lose a little definition for us, you know, we as designers are looking at, how do we create an edge around this shared space? So you need buildings, but, would that, or is it?
Would the point of those be a little bit more denser, that it's more communal?
Yes.
So, I mean, I think you're kind of working against the concept.
We are, we're, I'm just looking at the reaction to, I mean, again, your development community, your developers will determine if this is supported or not. And sometimes it's just, it's not for us, but it might be for that next generation, right? Or downscaling, you know?
Looking at B, it looks like the roads, there'd be more infrastructure to put in, and then that means more infrastructure to keep up with in the future. That's my biggest concern, I think, with B. I like B, I like both, but I like B more, but my concern is just the future cost of infrastructure, sewers, and then, and the initial cost, keeping up with all of that. That's something I'm thinking about.
We can do, for the next one, we can do linear feet. I think the other thing we were starting to look at was, you know, could this loop, could that be less than your current section? Could we drop from 28 down to 24? Right? So I don't know. But those are things we always take a look at, well, could we get a little less paving here? It's a little bit more of a park lane, a park loop. So it doesn't get rid of big sections, but it starts to just narrow it a little bit. But it really comes down to your city engineering.
Well, and in that loop you just pointed out, you're only, you know, unless you put duplexes back there, the number of units you get per linear foot is going to be probably pretty small, but that's, again, engineering and developer. I think on the barracks, I think, no, I like them, and I think that is going to be, just let the market bear it. Because as we're trying to decide where affordability is, and knowing, you know, the continued expansion of warehouse and other companies going in on the south side, you know, to the south of this development, how do we create space for move-up, you know, people that are going into their next, the second home, to create space for that first-time home buyer? So this may not be first-time home buyer, this may be, you know, move-up, second time, have a couple of kids, and hopefully, they're moving out of something then that creates a space for a first-time home buyer as well. So, you know, find, figuring out where that is, and that's where those barracks might fit in, with that option of, you know, financing of somebody that, you know, has total household income of $96,000, and, you know, $2,500 a month is a third of that, and it fits into your math for that, so.
We're also hearing they've become a little bit multi-generational, because somebody else is downscaling. They don't need their big house anymore, and they still, they're not ready to go to assisted living, but they're ready just to be a smaller scale and independent.
Yep.
So I think you have that in your project, it's a, it's a mix. Okay? Another one? No? I would say, otherwise, I really appreciate the feedback, it's very helpful. We've made several revisions to get to this point, and so there's probably lots of little details that aren't always noticeable, but some of it is the connection of the green spaces and the views. And we can wiggle things around to tighten this up, let's say, maybe, maybe there are smaller footprints, and you can get a few more homes, or from the other perspective, oh, maybe those are valuable and bring you more property tax, right? So kind of look at different things.
No need. Is, what is the next step? What would you be doing next?
So we're meeting with city staff next week to talk about the feedback we'd heard tonight, and then we will be making some revisions to the drawings based on the feedback. And then December 11th, we will have a couple concepts just on boards for the public to come in and give feedback, learn a little bit about it. So there'll be two sessions on December 11th, just like we did in September. I will say it's exciting, because most communities we're working in, there's a housing shortage, and everybody is struggling to figure this out, and to look at different housing types. So be exciting for a scale of this project, for others to learn, you know, wow, what is Jamesville doing, what's working? So it's kind of exciting to be at this point. I now understand there's a stress in a community because it's change, but it could be opportunity as well, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. I think that concludes, Lori, do we need a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
All right, we'll move to item three on the agenda, motion to adjourn. Do I got a motion? Okay. A motion by Cass and a second by Squire. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed? All right, we're done.